Welcome, everybody. Call to order and look for a motion to approve or amend the agenda.
So moved to approve.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Been moved in second to approve the agenda. All in favor say yes.
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 Motion carries three to zero. Presentations, discussion of roles and responsibilities for upcoming fire season. Monica Ward, Emergency Management Coordinator, and Becky Crockett, Planning Director. And I've heard Jim Watson is going to be part of this whole deal. So Monica, welcome and carry on.
Pull that microphone down. The other one?
Don't get them too close together because then they'll squelch.
I'll just get taller.
You're just fine.
Monica Ward, Emergency Management. This meeting today is to go over the roles and responsibilities for wildfire, especially since we're coming up on the wildfire season. And it's going to benefit us also in the fact that we are rewriting the wildfire annex for the emergency operations plan. So a lot of this information will show up in our emergency operations plan. And with that, I would like to introduce Jim Watson, Brookings Fire Chief.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. How are we doing today?
Good, Bud.
Good, boss.
Good. So why we're here today is just to, we wanted to just make a little presentation here just to let everybody know kind of what their roles and responsibilities are in case of, you know, we have another, another large fire on the landscape. Because a little, in 2017 during the Cheko Bar fire, we had a little bit of confusion of how to call for the conflagration, who should call for the flagration, and who would take charge of the unprotected areas. Some of that confusion was we haven't had, before that, we hadn't had a conflagration called in the, in the county since 2002 during the Biscuit Fire. So, but then we had two in a row in 17 and 18. So we just wanted to make sure we could get this, you know, how, all of our roles and responsibilities and kind of streamline that. So if we do need to call that, it's a smoother transition than it, than it kind of was in 17 because we had things going to the Governor's Office when it wasn't, shouldn't have. Some delegations of authorities before people got here that should have been having those delegations. So that way, we're all on the same page. So, and we want to talk a little bit about the upcoming fire season. You know, a little bit what, what to expect. We're definitely in a drought condition. I was talking to one of the citizens of Brookings and we were both saying, boy, we sure need the rain. And I don't ever remember having to say that back in Curry County on the coast and, and when I first moved here 30 years ago. So it's kind of concerning for all of us in the fire service. And now I guess I didn't introduce myself, but Jim Watson and I sit as the Fire Defense Board Chief for the, the Fire Defense Boards. So for our agenda here, I don't know if Chief Rue has Temples on there, but she was planning on doing a virtual. But we do have representatives from State Fire Marshal Office. Sarah, she's our Regional Conflagration Coordinator, Mobilization Coordinator. Sam Lashley, he's one of our State Fire Marshal deputies. And I just met our, our new arson detective from OSP there, but I can't, I forgot his name already. We have Mike Robinson from Coos Forest, Derwin from Coos Forest, Derwin Boggs, Kyle Reed, he's our Fire Risk Reduction Specialist with Oregon State Fire Marshal. And then we have a lot of district chiefs from, we've got Assistant Chief Howard from Cape Ferrello Pistol River, Richard Little, Tyson Krieger from Gold Beach, board member, no, man, I just I get in front of, I get in front of the microphones and things just go out of my head.
It's all right.
And then we have the Assistant Chief for Winchek Fire, Mike Lancaster.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just sent Marshal Reece Temple and she sent a note back. She can, I can hear you, but does not appear to have the camera on in the room. I'm happy to unmute if you need or when you need. So Eric, if you're listening in, would you like to get her on if we can? Sorry for the delay, guys.
Where's the mouse at? It's somewhere near here. Let me see that real quick because I see, I think there's five people in the meeting.
She can hear.
I sent this out to a lot of people, too.
They're on? But they said in Court's email, she said she
Does not appear to have a camera on.
There they are, right there.
I can see that.
Yep, there they all are, right there. They're on. They just don't have their cameras on. Right.
Well, one of them's unmuted, that Marianna.
Mariana.
Mariana?
Yeah, she's the State Fire Marshal.
There we go.
That's us.
Oh, no, that's us.
That's us.
There!
Good afternoon, chief.
Eric. Eric, mute this speaker here because we're going to get the feedback, I think. Or maybe that was her. Okay, all right.
Can you sing a song or something so we can make sure you don't squelch?
Just check your microphone is what we're trying to do.
That stumped her.
Do another test.
I, I can hear you.
We'll get this figured out. There's no hurry here.
Yeah, there's some echo.
Yeah, it's an echo on her. She's got her volume on her computer and her microphone is what it is. So it's echoing, it's feeding back. Okay.
So anyways, and then by looking at that, Paul Dollars with, he's a captain with Harbor Fire. And Russell Willstat, he's the FMO for the Gold Beach
Forest Service?
Forest Service.
Yeah.
For our areas, so.
So no, no North County, Jim? Wayne Moore and?
Well, I sent the invitation out, so.
I'll get after that.
Got to be on our end.
So with introductions and kind of why we're here, I was going to turn this over to Mike Robinson at this time.
Okay.
Turn it over to me?
Turn it over to Mike.
Uh-oh.
For your part of the, part of the party?
Break out the bear.
We're in trouble.
I have seen no, no agenda, yet I always have an agenda.
Welcome, Mike.
Welcome. Thank you all for letting me come back down to Coos, Curry County from Coos County. It was, it's nice to see all of some familiar faces. And for you that don't know me, Mike Robinson, Coos Forest Protective Association, District Manager, worked down here for a number of years. I'm going into, well, I started way back in the early 1900s. So I, I have a few fire seasons under my belt. And I have two fire seasons left before I retire. So thanks for having me down. It's great to come back to Curry County. So I don't know what the heck I was supposed to talk about, but I have a few notes. I always have an agenda, like I said, so. So, so it's great. I was talking to some of the Fire Marshal people, representatives out in the hall, and I don't know all of them. I haven't seen Sarah yet. And my, my point is with my conversation is none of us are big enough, strong enough to take on fires anymore by ourselves. We used to be pretty dang proud of ourselves for what we could do by ourselves. And that, that's just not the case anymore. We, we have got to figure out how to do better and be better because the people of our counties deserve it. And, and you, you all three up there, sitting up there should be, rest assured that when we're, when we're talking and we're building collaborations, we're building partnerships, that we're going to do that together as groups. And, and we're going to do that for the best of the people. And you can rest assured that we've got your best interests in mind. So that, that's what I would say for you, for you three. Now, there's, there's lots of discussion to be had on, on the money that's been thrown around the state and there's a lot of new added capacity and the fire. There's been a lot of codes that have changed and things are changing. The OSM, OSFM is going to get out into the rural interface with us. And there's a lot to be said about that and there's a lot to learn about that. And there's still a lot of uncertainty that we don't know about that yet. But in the end, the end game will be to make sure that what we're doing for the people in our counties is the best for them. So just, just be aware of that. And we will take care of, of that business. And we have a lot of work to do and we'll have a lot of time to sit in a room and talk about, hey, what are we going to do? We have a fire that's coming off the Forest Service and it's traveling 30,000 acres a day. And, and we've got unprotected structures or under protected ground. What are we going to do when it comes to positioning ourselves good? As Jim was speaking about the Cheko Bar fire. How are we going to deal with that? And I, I can tell you, we need to have those conversations because it, our summers suck anymore. I mean, they're just so dry and it's so, so, it's becoming dangerous. And what happened to our winter rain? I mean, where is it? You know, we don't have any water in our rivers. We don't have any water in our reservoirs. We're going to, we're putting severity resources on starting June 1 and maybe earlier just because we know we're going to have fire traveling across our landscapes. And this is not just in Central Eastern Oregon. This is going to be in our world that we live in. And I'm sorry to, to sound like the sky is falling, but I've been dealing with this for a number of years and, and it's not getting easier. And that just bodes to us working closer and better together and, and confining our resources, not having any eagles and understanding that what we do is for the best for everybody. We, we protect. So I would just say that what's going to happen out in front of us is, is going to be exciting working with the Fire Marshal's Office and, and the Forest Service and the BLM and all the partners that we have, our, our counties, and, and getting prepared for this, these, these sort of emergencies that will fall upon us. And hopefully what we do and our, our mission, especially for CFPA and Fire Marshal's people are right there with us, is we keep fire off the landscape anytime we can. We do that first through fire prevention and getting out and educating people. And then we do that by aggressive initial attack if there is a fire on the landscape. So those two things are our best tools that we have. Now, if we have to come to you guys and start talking about delegations of authority, who's going to take care of this, that, and this, then we have a problem on our hands and, and we will be prepared to deal with that. So I would say that I think fire season will be early. I just don't see any other way around it. For us on, on this side of the, of the Cascades, we may see some rain that comes in and prolongs the start of our fire season, but the, the stage has been set. We did not get our winter rain. So the stage is set for us, whether it rains a little bit on and off for the next couple of months. We will have a fire season that will be upon us earlier than it should be. We're starting to see fire seasons that are lasting upwards 150 days. That's, that's working its way up to six months of the year that we're actually in fire season with our A-game and our hats on, ready to go out the door when the fire bell goes off. That's not good for any of us. We get tired, we get cranky, I need my sleep. Food once in a while is good, but those sort of things are bothering us in the, in all of our capacities. And so we, we've got to figure out how, how to leverage ourselves to work better and, and get things done more efficiently. That's, that should be our, our jobs. I think we'll see fire growth on the east side by the first of June. We were over on, in the Clamath District's first of June with fire teams last year. Their reservoirs have no water, they have no snowpack. They're already carrying 50 acre fires. So it's, we're going to be back over there in June. I think we'll probably start, uh, large fires on this side of the hill probably mid-July if we don't get some change. We'd like to say mid-August, right? That, and then hang on for that one month period of time on the west side. And, and thank ourselves if we made it through that. But it's going to be at least two months this year where we have to hang on. And so what that does is it, it strains our system. It puts, it puts resources at, at risk. It puts resources at a, at a limited amount. We don't have, we just have so many resources and, and so it's just going to strain our system and it'll challenge us as we work through it. So, so, and of course for this county, one of the wild cards is lightning. We don't know what's going to happen with lightning. Now, I can say, and I've said this before and I might as well stick to my story, if we have a snowpack, we get lightning. If we don't have a snowpack, we don't. So there you go. We'll move on.
Could you clarify? No, I'm
That's my, that's my, that's my prediction. So just, we'll see how that works out. We don't have a snowpack, so maybe we'll make it. So some of the things that bother all of us as we move into fire season and we, we continue to deal with COVID, we, we are having a hard time hiring people. We are just having a tough time of it. And, and I would say that we're going to, we partner up and we're going to be, we're going to work ourselves together as OSFM, but damn it, they're competing for our people, too. You know, so, so we're all competing for the same workforce, right? And there's only so many of them. And COVID has changed the, the playing field a lot. So we're doing a lot of recruitment as well as OSFM and the fire departments. We're all trying to recruit people always. We have people in our, in our, with our red trucks that are driving around with "Hiring Now" signs on the back of them. Jeez, it's, it looks horrible. But we're, we're trying to do whatever we can to hire people. And then, and then the other challenge is retention. We keep going through these long, bad fire seasons and, and we just, we're burning people out. They don't get any summer vacations, they don't see their families. So they, they get tired of it and they move on. There's a better way of life probably for the younger, for our younger generations. So, so we're working really hard at those two items. We're also building out a heli-tac program that you guys may not be aware of. We're investing about $300,000 in a new helicopter and a, and a heli-tac crew that will be with that helicopter. And we can get from our base in Coquille to Brookings in 32 minutes with that helicopter with a crew. And it'll have the ability to put down a lot more water than what we normally do. We've always had a helicopter contract, but this is going to be a helicopter contract that's going to put fire out on the landscape. So that's one of the ways we're doing more with less is leveraging our ability to get to fires quick and put them out quick. We're all pretty dang good at putting fires out small. We're not so good when they get big.
I want you to put them out before they get big. So that's, that's, you know, Mike, I'll just say that, you know, as a longtime Brookings guy, grew up and we had people in the, those fire watches all summer long.
Yep.
And we didn't struggle with fires like we do now. And I don't know if we could go back to that way of doing it, but when, when a fire was spotted, you put it out. And the old story is there's, there's a big barbecue on French Hill over by Gasky. And all of a sudden, there's people showing up to, but it was just a, it was a barbecue. That's how serious they were about putting fires out.
Yep.
And we didn't have the Cheko Bars and the, all these, you know, we just didn't have those fires. But those, now they rent those out to some
Yeah.
People that are doing whatever up there instead of looking for fires. So I'll get off my soapbox.
And in this county, we still have, we have detection cameras. So we're still watching for fires, obviously. And we're getting on fires from the firebug also. And I will tell you, one of my last things here was about partners and cooperators and the Forest Service, OSFM, the BLM, all of our fire departments and our landowner base, along with our counties that help support everything we do. You know, we just, we can't do it alone. And I will say that the Forest Service is a great partner for us right now. Merv George and his crew, they're, they are second to none when it comes to having their eye on what, what used to be the old way of putting fire out, right? So we're seeing that and we're enjoying that. And we're seeing the results of that from Merv and his crew.
Good.
And we will use their leverage and our resources, we're leveraging theirs. And things are working out pretty well there. So, so yeah, we're trying to get back to that a little bit, John, and I perfectly understand what you're saying. So without a be quiet, that was my agenda. I don't know if I said what was supposed to been said, but that was my agenda.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
So I'm back. So another thing that, part of mine, my, to do on this list was to talk a little bit about the explanation of what the Fire Defense Board Chiefs, what are, what it is and how it works. But basically, it's our Fire Defense Board, it includes all the, all the district city chiefs. Coos Forest sits on that, the Forest Service. And so we're, we're all talking about fire and, you know, what are we going to do to support each other? As Mike touched on, that we're all, we're all buying for the same workforce. Voluntarism is going way down. So it used to be, you know, when I started with Brookings Fire as a volunteer, that we could probably handle a mill fire with just Harbor and Brookings. But nowadays, we're probably going to have to call the whole county and plus most of Del Norte County if we, if we caught one of the mills on fire. So, so with the Fire Defense Board Chiefs, we're, we're strategizing how to do that. And with Central County, they've kind of gone to an auto aid. South County, we're looking at some of that. I'm not sure what, what the push is for up in North County. But with us, we're talking more just responding to fires and maybe some, some more technical type calls down there. So that's, that, the Fire Defense Board, we decided to start meeting monthly instead of quarterly because we didn't feel like we were getting enough business, especially with fire season coming. So we want to have our plan in, in place and maybe have our, our task force, you know, ready to roll instead of waiting for the, the event to happen, but have it pre-planned and ready to go. And that's Chief Krieger, myself, and some of the other chiefs. We've been, been working on that with some of our, our people from our departments also. But in the Fire Defense Board, when it happens before we, before we call the state, is we have to throw everything we can at it. And then once at a fire, and if it's threatening neighborhoods, towns, Agnes always comes to mind because they usually are the catcher's mitt for a lot of the fires that get on the landscape around here. So we'll send all of our resources. And once we've drawn our resources down to where we can't really operate effectively in the county anymore, say if we had something up there going and something pops in Brookings, it's a long ways to get stuff back around. So that's when we would, I would work with the district chief as the Fire Defense Board Chief. And then we would work on, you know, when are we? And as, as me as the Fire Defense Board Chief, I can help coordinate with what our county resources are. Maybe call in a couple of our neighboring counties if they, or if they have stuff available. But once it's come to a point that we need the state, then I would be in, in contact with the, the Board of Commissioners also and, and our other cooperators. And then we would ask the state for a conflagration and, and start that conversation to get that called from the Governor. And as we saw in 17 and 18, you know, they, everybody's out fighting. In 17 especially, we already had, most of the state was out fighting fire, too. So it doesn't just happen right away. So we need to be, be ahead of it and see what's happening. And the Cheko Bar, that thing just picked up and started moving. I don't know, you know, the call was made, if it was late on time or, but it, it just, it was, it is what it was. To where the Klondike, we're a little more better off to have resources here to be able to help support and, you know, keep the, keep the fire at bay around Agnes. So, so that's kind of our role and responsibility is the, the Fire Defense Board. And so just to let you know, you know, we are, we are pretty active. And we, we decided we weren't meeting enough because of the new, years passed. Maybe four times a year, we, we did meet and talked about things that was fine. But the way it's been going is that we're always in fire season. We had planned on having this meeting for the last couple of years, but it seems like every time we would plan it, fire season had already started and everybody was off and running already. So with that, I think I'll turn that over to Sarah.
There you are, Sarah. You can keep it.
All right. I'm not going to take it home. I promise not to do that. All right. So, good afternoon. I'm really excited to be here with all of you today. My name is Sarah Rubrik and I am the State Fire Marshal's Office Regional Mobilization Coordinator. And I am one of the direct results of Senate Bill 762. A little bit about my history. I am, I've been with the State Fire Marshal's Office since June of last year. Prior to working for the State Fire Marshal's Office, I was the Emergency Manager and Search and Rescue Coordinator for Jackson and Josephine County for about 22 years. So all of the big fires in Southwest Oregon over the last 22 years, I've been intimately involved with and have been, spent quite a bit of time in Curry County, whether it be for large fire events or search and rescue missions. And have been very close to Curry County a good majority of my life. So the fact that I get to come over and serve Curry County as part of my new role in Oregon State Fire Marshal's Office is pretty awesome for me. My current region, as it stands today, is Lake Clamath, Jackson, Josephine, and Curry County. However, as of next week, a new Regional Mobilization Coordinator will be hired and take over Lake and Clamath County for me. So I will then have Jackson, Josephine, Curry, and Coos County. So I'll be able to focus a little bit tighter on Jackson, Josephine, Curry, and Coos County. So that will give me the connection between Coos and Curry and then also on Jackson and Josephine. So since I've served Jackson and Josephine specifically for the last 22 years, that's a pretty easy fit for me. I have an awful lot left to learn still about coastal, specific Coos and Curry. But, but that's going to come pretty naturally as I get to focus more on this southwest corner. So that's a little bit about my, my background. So my role in the State Fire Marshal's Office, these positions as Regional Mobilization Coordinators are brand new. Last year, fire season was our very first year and it was pretty exciting. I started, like I said, in June and we rolled right into a really, really busy fire season. A lot of really great lessons were learned. We tried a lot of new things at the State Fire Marshal's Office and had a lot of new resources available to us. And, and I think that a lot of things worked really, really well. And we get to use those resources again this year. And, and so I think that this year is probably going to be pretty busy as well. And being able to have those resources available to us to help the local agencies is pretty awesome. And I think that we're going to be able to make a real big difference as we all move forward with the other partner agencies that also receive some of those benefits of 762. And hopefully, you know, everybody around us will be able to feel those differences as we move into fire seasons in years to come. So my role specifically as a Regional Mobilization Coordinator is to support mobilization requests. So as Chief Watson explained, as you outgrow your resources here in Curry County, he would reach out to me as a mobilization coordinator and I would help fulfill any needs or requests from adjoining counties. And if we outgrew those requests, then I could reach out to the state and help facilitate those statewide conflagration requests. I would then help fill out all the paperwork and any delegations of authority that needed to be filled out, including through the Board of County Commissioners for unprotected areas. And we'll talk about that again in just a few more minutes. But then also help facilitate the integration of the incident management teams as they came into town to help take over the, the management of those fires. So then mutual aid assistance and guidance. So throughout the year, I can help facilitate any mutual aid agreements that need to be updated. Jim and I have been working on updating the, the countywide fire mutual aid agreement that needed to be updated with all of the fire agencies. And that's set to be signed next month. So I can help facilitate a lot of those agreements throughout the county. So that's some good administrative work that can be done in off-seasons. Any incident response needs. So anything logistically that any of the fire chief needs, chiefs need that, that could help their jobs be easier throughout the year. It doesn't just have to be during fire season, but if they're having a real bad day, anything that I can do to help lessen that bad day, I'm, I am there for them to help make that better. Anything in the mobilization plan? You've got a copy of last year's mobilization plan. It's being updated right now. And as soon as that comes out, I'll give you copies of the next year's plan. But anything in that document that they need assistance with, whether it's training so that they're able to be deployed on a conflagration, any equipment needs, any training needs, I am there to help be that conduit for any needs that they have to help them be ready to respond to anything in their own community or to respond to somebody else's community to be helpful. So anything at all that they can think of to make their lives easier, I'm there to help be a resource and help them find whatever it is that they need. So there hasn't been anything that they've had, that they've asked for that we haven't been able to find a solution for yet. But I'm sure there will come a time where they'll get creative and I'll have to put my thinking cap on and, and find something for them. So what I wanted to show you here on this map is I wanted to make sure that everybody understood the concept of unprotected areas in Curry County. So when we talk about delegations of authority, so when we have a large fire event and we ask for state assistance and we have an incident management team that comes in to manage a large fire incident, such as the Cheko Bar fire, the fire districts that are such as the Chetco Bar fire, the fire districts that are affected by that event and have an incident management team come in, they sign over a delegation of their authority to an incident management team so that they can come in and manage that incident in their district. Well, all of the areas, so you can see here on this map, the districts are outlined in blue. Anything that is not outlined in blue and is not in yellow, which the resolution's not super great on this TV and you can't see it super well, but the yellow is ODF property, which only means that they are protected for wildland firefighting, not structural, right? So anything that's not outlined in blue is not structurally protected, which means by ORS that you are technically the fire chief of those residents. So if we were going to have state resources come in to protect those structures, we would ask for the Board of County Commissioners to sign a delegation of authority to allow the incident management team to manage the firefight of those structures. Does that make sense?
Can we sign it now, prior to?
That's a totally legitimate question.
That's amazing for me.
So, no, you can't sign it now, only because the circumstances of the event and the incident commander of the event, the date of the event, all of those things change based on the timing and all of those circumstances change. I've given you a copy of the Chetco Bar delegation that was signed, so you have kind of an idea of what it's going to look like. I can also provide you with a template that is a, it's a very basic outline of what those delegations look like. If you want your legal counsel to take a look at it and make sure that nothing in there scares legal counsel at all. It's very, very basic. Excuse me. And you can decide what things you want to keep or what things you want to allow the incident management team to take for you. So if you want to, if you want to keep public information for yourself, or if you want to, there's not a whole lot that the county commissioners would actually keep themselves, like a fire district, which might keep initial attack for themselves, or they might keep other actual, like an emergency medical response they might keep for themselves. The county commissioners are a little bit different because you don't have that first response capability to begin with. But it's a very, very basic outline template that you can take a look at, and we can certainly have additional conversations about it anytime you'd like. The biggest concept I want you to take away from today is that the structurally unprotected areas of Curry County fall under your responsibility, and you will sign over that delegation for somebody else to come and manage the incident. And then, in turn, when that incident is under control, you will take back that authority when the incident management team leaves. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. The other documentation that I gave you, in addition to the example that I gave you from Chetco Bar, is a front and back, one-page document of some other responsibilities, some other responsibilities of county commissioners for unprotected in an emergency. And those kind of outline some things like you'll need to attend the cooperators' meetings in a large event. Commissioner Boyce, I think you probably even slept in your car at the Chetco Bar fire. Probably have been hard to get you to leave that event. But to attend the cooperators' meetings and participate in the Emergency Operations Center activities, perhaps provide county personnel such as GIS support if you have that, or public works personnel. But those are your expected contributions from the county for a large event as county commissioner. So if you have any questions about those things, I'd be happy to answer those as well. But wanted to at least make sure that you understood that part of your responsibility as it relates to large fire events. Any questions about?
You said you had a template?
Yes, I've got a blank template, and I'd be happy to email that to you. It's easiest to email it to you because it's kind of a fill-in-the-blank, a tab through and fill-in-the-blank, and I'll email that one to you.
Yeah, in 2017, our council huddle was working overtime trying to make sure we did everything we possibly could, be on time, and all the details. And he just did a remarkable job. We did make a few little mistakes, but overall, you know, we got the work done.
Yeah, yeah. And it showed, for sure. Everything turned out exactly the way it was supposed to. I'll get you, do you want me to email them to you, Commissioner Boyce?
I'll make sure the other commissioners see it, and Council Pope as well. Yes, thank you.
No problem. I'll do that. And-
And by the way, I don't think I put in any more time in those days than you did here. And it was-
It's all hands on deck, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
No doubt about it. And everybody seems to come together. But the more information we have on the front end, the better off we all feel in that moment. So I want to make sure that any information that I can provide to you beforehand, you know, to make you feel more comfortable and more equipped, that's my role now officially. And if I leave here and you have more questions, my business card is attached to the front of the mobilization plan that I provided to you. Don't hesitate to call. I'm available to you 24/7. So email me, call me. Please don't hesitate. I want to be a resource for you. So if you've got any questions, reach out to me anytime.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're very welcome.
We're just thrilled to have you representing those five counties.
Good, thank you very much.
Fantastic.
More than thrilled to be here. All right, who's next?
I was just going to follow up on something that Sarah was talking about, if I could. So the delegation would be signed by you, it would allow the structure of people to come in and help in those areas that we protect, not ODF, it's association protection, where the structures are. Wilderness Retreat would be a good example, right? So just know that when that happens, we still provide the jurisdictional protection up there, and it's our money. And we have to enter into a cost share with the Fire Marshal's Office to come in. You give them the delegation to come in, they work with us, and we have to have a cost share with these two. We pay the bill, not the county, we do. So there'll be a lot of conversation between Watson and us, and you, and me, and everybody before this would ever happen to come down to sign the delegation. So no, you don't get to sign a delegation right now, John. So that is serious work when it comes down to that point, because there's money flows and jurisdictional responsibilities that go along with that.
Director Robson, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
You know, you just said something there.
I was going to sit down.
No, I'm going to bombard you now.
We thought you were sitting down.
Whoa. So our ability to really be precise when the time comes, you know, the Chetco Bar fire didn't have that much in the way of competition. But my gosh, the Klondike, less than a year later, had all kinds of competition from California. So if we don't have our, everything in order, then it can become a competitive situation for the resources. And so we don't want the slightest delay. And I think that's been said here today. So hopefully we'll not be in that situation where we are competing and all the firefighting teams are battling to get every bit of resources that they can.
Duly noted.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Who's next?
Monica.
Monica.
Do you want to take on evacuations at all?
With a little bit of experience. Morning, everybody, and welcome this afternoon. I'm Sheriff Ward, Creek Insurance Office. Just a little, you know, history about the Chetco Bar fire. I was in bed at the time when I get a phone call that says, hey, we need to evacuate people, okay? We can do that. No, we need it right now. So the fire was moving so fast that, you know, by the time I got up and headed to Brookings and got everybody together, we did a phenomenal job, I believe, with my crew that we had, along with some search and rescue. We even called some Del Norte deputies up to help us and Brookings police, start evacuating because it was, the fire was moving so fast at that point, coming down because of the warm winds that come down, the Chetco effect. And so anyway, it's my job to get everything, all the people out, notifications. But I really can't do that until I have all the information that I need to make that decision. That information comes from the fire guys. So, hey, this is what's going on, this is how fast it's moving, this, okay, then we start making our evacuations. That was a long, torn-out van. I think I worked thirty-something days in advance where I hit a wall and just had to take a few days off. But by that time, it was, it was pretty much under control. But I think everybody did, you know, with the resources we had, we did a pretty damn good job with all, you know, everybody working together. One of my first things, you know, after I started getting the evacuations going was to contact the commissioners. And I really had no prior experience other than, you know, being on the sideline a few times. But now being four in the front there, I thought we needed a emergency declaration signed by the commissioners so we can get some extra help, because I knew it was going to be big. So that's what I did. We got a commissioner liaison assigned to it, and then we started working the incident command. And the incident command came together. My only complaint, really, about fire crews coming from out of the, all over the United States, they're here for mandatory, certain amount of time, and then they mandatory have to leave. By the time they get started and figure out what's going on, the other teams is coming in, well, they may not like that plan that the other one got started. And then it just takes a while. You know, instead of putting the wet stuff on the red stuff, you know, that's how I felt it needs to be done. But when that first Chetco Bar fire started, it was only, it was very small when we noticed. Actually, we had a search going on at the same time of a guy in that same area. And we had, getting a helicopter up when we already told the helicopters up, seeing some smoke. And I think the explanation from the Forest Service at that time says, well, we didn't want to put water on it because it would have pushed it down the hill towards the river. My question as a firefighter is, does water push fire? And so if it does, you know, when we got a big fire, I mean, we're constantly putting water on it. So why not just put water on it, all you got at the time, and get it out? That's my, it's common sense to me, but maybe I'm wrong. What's that?
Sheriff, that was- Sheriff, that was in your office, and I was there, and we both, you could have knocked us over with a feather when the-
When we were talking to Tina.
Yes. So, and we were not very, we were respectful, but we were not very nice on our request to put the fire out right then. And we were ignored.
And I'm not a firefighter, but I'm not saying that I won't. I mean, there's photos of me and Derwin out fighting with Tyson on a fire up Saunders Creek. Pretty good job getting that fire out before it spread too far. So anyway, we all worked together, and that's my job, is evacuations and rehoming, you know, once it's safe to go. And what we do is we block off the area that's being evacuated. We can't forcibly remove somebody if they're saying, I'm staying, or whatever. But, okay, well, we may not be able to come back and get you. So once we evacuate the area, we have patrols that keep people out of that area. So we, you know, keep the looting and all that stuff going away. But once it's safe to go back in, then we make notifications that we can allow them back in. And we just kind of, it's, like I said, it's an all-hands-on-deck, and we use all the resources we got to make it happen. So that's all I got. And this is Monica Ward. I want to, again, she's no relation, she's just somebody we hired.
Thank you.
She's not your daughter from you and Sarah?
Wow, I wouldn't even touch that one.
All right, to continue on with evacuations, I've never been part of a wildfire evacuation, but I've been involved in a lot of evacuations that we did have people waiting until the last minute, or they weren't properly educated on when to evacuate. And that's what we need to start on now, is educating the community on evacuation, getting their go-bags ready, and signing up for Everbridge, following the sheriff's page, Emergency Management, the county page on Facebook so that we are getting the message out. But especially when it comes to Facebook, I feel that we should consider having a single page posting the information and every other page sharing from there, so that we are sharing the same message across the board and there is no misinterpretation. It is very easy to send multiple messages out to the public. So, and everything on Facebook can be manipulated. So just take that into consideration. Continuing on with collaboration and communication, the grant application that we submitted last week for D4H, that will give us the ability to communicate across the county and maintain situational awareness, which while our firefighters are out there dealing with the incident, back here, we're able to assess what's going on, and the sheriff can then have a better awareness of what is the condition, do we need to get an evacuation going. And those decisions can be made quickly because the assessment's occurring much sooner because we don't have that communication gap anymore. The evacuation plan grant, we have moved on to the next round. So we owe the next application at the end of June. With that, both companies are looking into doing a public protection plan as well as giving us the toolkit so that we have evacuation routes built. But at the same time, we can adjust them with the situation because we don't really know what's going to happen, where is the fire going to start. So we can adjust it and have pre-designated routes that we're adapting as necessary. Sadly, those will not be ready in time for this fire season, but future fire seasons, we will at least have those tools at, in our hands, which also get loaded into D4H. So we're going to have everything right in one spot instead of having to pull from multiple sources. And that concludes everything I had for evacuation.
Next.
Good afternoon. My name's Kyle Reed. I'm one of the Fire Risk Reduction Specialists for the Office of State Fire Marshal. So the Fire Risk Reduction Specialists are new positions with OSFM, just like Sarah's is with Mobilization Coordinators. Through Senate Bill 762, the Community Risk Reduction Unit was formed for OSFM, which underneath that is the Fire Risk Reduction Specialist Positions. So our focus really is pre-fire, post-fire, working with communities, the fire departments, the counties, and all of the other partners to look at things we could do ahead of time with prevention, mitigation, and education. So a couple of the things I wanted to share today, which I've been working with the fire departments and other groups about, is through Senate Bill 762, OSFM received some money to help at the local level. So we have $7 million that will be used statewide through a grant process to help the local fire departments and other partners with prevention, mitigation, education things, specific to wildfire. So some of the parameters there that we're really looking at focusing on through Senate Bill 762 is some D space work on lands that are owned by socially and economically vulnerable communities, persons of limited English, and then persons with lower income, as well as some D space work around critical and emergency infrastructure, and then D space work for, around schools, hospitals, and facilities that serve seniors. So the grant funding is not quite available yet. We just finished up some listening and understanding sessions with the fire service and our partners across the state, trying to get a little bit better idea, a little bit better game plan on what we want to do and where to go next. But we're getting really close on getting that funding out. The one area where we have gone ahead and moved forward with is with schools and hospitals. So we've sent letters to all the schools and hospitals across the state, just letting them know that, you know, the Fire Risk Reduction Specialists are here to assist them with their wildfire needs ahead of time, and attached a little bit of dollars to that. So there's some small dollars out there for the schools and hospitals to do some small projects. So that's out there right now. To date, we've received about forty-eight grants across the state for that. That's just about $100,000. So again, these aren't large grants, but it's an opportunity for us to start those conversations with the schools and hospitals and start building a bigger plan going forward. So with that, that's all I really have to share today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rich?
Tyson.
Tyson Greger, Park Chief, Gold Beach, working on the Training Center. So, most everybody in here has talked about the Training Center and those sort of things. The problem that we're starting to see, and we saw with the Training Center prior, was that this whole problem that we're having with fires, multifaceted. You get into lack of equipment, you get into lack of personnel, lack of incoming personnel, so basically recruitment, training, and retention. So, one of the things we wanted to start to do with the Training Center when we first got started, is we need, we wanted to try to, A, train more fire crews for the local areas to get started, that was our initial goal. But, we've also been working now with SWAC a little bit, we had a conversation with them last week on some things we're trying to do there. I had a good conversation with Chief Reese Temple this morning about the Training Center, and some of the things we're looking at doing is concentrating more on the recruitment and training of those crews that can then backfill into Forest Service positions, State Forestry, ODF, Coues Forest Patrol, into those positions. When you start talking about that, you have, the first problem is recruiting. So, one thing we're looking at doing, and we've had some conversations about doing some, basically camps, so we'll go out and we'll go to different high schools in the region, and set up a couple of different week camps with kids in high school still, to try to introduce them to the fire program, entice them with some cool stuff, maybe get some helicopters, herd their chief to fly around, and we can get those things out there to try to be able to spark an interest in it. It's gonna be kind of a shotgun approach, but we have to start somewhere, and having a Training Center that we can take these kids back to and start teaching them how to do the wildland, might be prosperous for us in the long run. The second part of it is housing. So, everybody in Curry County knows that there's a problem with housing here. I had some conversations with some guys that were working with Coues Forest Patrol, I think it was last year, there were dozens of people from outside the area, a lot of them on the East Coast, that were looking to come over here to fight fire. But, when they start looking into things, they don't have any place to stay. One of the big emphasis is on the Training Center from day one, was to be able to have dormitory-style housing out there, to not only take care of incoming seasonal crews, because the Training Center will also, obviously, the training will be downplayed a lot during the summertime, because we're gonna be busy other than the law enforcement side of it. So, we'll have capability to be able to house and feed and take care of people out there. We think that would be a good combination with some of these recruiting efforts that we have in the training. So, that way, we'd be able to recruit kids, we'd be able to train the kids, and then possibly be able to retain them. So, we do not want to be competition with Coues Forest Patrol, ODF, and the Forest Service as the Training Center. We would like to be a conduit to kind of start shoving them people, to be able to train them and have some retention, but...
Tyson, what would be the age group? I mean, is there a...
So, the discussion that we had was SWAC. They specifically said juniors, but this is how this works with SWAC. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna have programs that we can run through our individual fire departments to get training, that those kids in a junior or explorer program can train. Most of us have junior or explorer programs, that's where I started out when I was fourteen. Chief Reese Temple, she told me that too, she started out as an explorer when she was young, and we'll start those out as juniors, juniors in high school. But, what we're trying to set in place is where they can do classes through us, that they will also be able to earn college credit courses during, while they're still in high school, so they can get a head start with it. And that, for some kids that get sparked, and they want to be able to go into that field as a firefighter, that might be a really good avenue for them, they can get a couple of your head start, and get into a job a lot quicker that way.
So, is it seventeen, or can, you know, you could be a junior and be sixteen?
What we do, we start our juniors out at sixteen, on our department. There's a lot of things that they can't do, but they really learn how to roll hose, wash a lot of trucks, but at the same time, they're learning, because it's on the job, they see what we're doing, they hear what we're saying, they see the tactics, they go through a lot of the same classes, they're just not able to be accredited through DPSST. So, with all this, we're trying to roll everybody in from the State Fire Marshal's office, ODF, Coues Forest Patrol, Forest Service, we have contacts with them, DPSST, to try to figure out how we can take all of those resources outside and shove them into our Training Center, and then somehow convey out active firefighters for our area. That's our number-one goal right now. It is an emergency services facility, it is going to have resources there for structural firefighting, USAR, there's a lot of things coming from the outside. I've been talking a lot with Monica about doing some stuff possibly with the National Guard, for their, you know, like a rubble pile, I think is what they refer to it as, for training, because they only have one place in Oregon to be able to do that currently, something we could roll in out there. Roll in all that stuff, but we just, we know that we have to have a high emphasis on the wildland firefighting, because that is gonna affect every community in Curry County. It's been our biggest threat, I said that when I became Chief of Gold Beach, that, yes, structured fires are bad, but structured fires are a very small box, and it's easier for us to keep that in a box, but when you have something like Chaco Bar, Klondike, and you pass that 100,000-acre mark and you're growing, it is very difficult to get the resources for that. Sometimes you're lucky, because you're the only, you know, you're the big kid on the block, and you get all the resources, and there's other days you're sitting there and you're requesting 100 or something, because you're only gonna get 25. So, we're gonna, we're gonna work at it, we're gonna try to supply the firefighters for this area, and do everything we can do to do that, and kind of see where the cards fall, but we're looking for input from anybody that wants to be part of the Training Center and help keep that going. So, we'll have a visit from DSL to take care of some paperwork there on the wetland designation at that location, and they should be there somewhere between the ninth and the sixteenth. So, we're gonna be out there taking care of that and getting all the paperwork done for that and sent up to the state.
Chris?
Tyson, a quick question. I know the recruiting process is getting so hard for getting firefighters on a volunteer program, so I'm just wondering if there's any, you know, money left in some of the districts, if it would be possible to possibly offer them a small stipend as a kind of a signing thing, to get them involved, and that way, they're at least you're paying for their gas, their, some of their time...
Yeah, there's some districts that have a few bucks, but a lot of them don't. I mean, like, even, you take, for instance, Sixes, for instance, I think their entire yearly operating budget is just barely over $15,000. That doesn't even pay for their insurance, for their equipment, for instance. What we found is most advantageous for us, is we look out into the community, we see something that's vested in the community, kind of make sure they don't get in trouble there for a while, and then we go after them directly, and that's been pretty successful for us. The problem that we had is when we hung the banner on the side of our rig, we got everybody that wanted a badge to come down there and try to get on the fire department, and you just have trouble. You know, you have people doing things that they're not supposed to be doing, you don't have people that are taken seriously, our retention rate was poor, it was one in, maybe one in 10. So, actively recruiting is how we got past that.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Nope. Who's up next, Jim? Okay, public? Rich? Public comments time. Don't see a lot of public.
Hi, thank you, Roadmaster Richard Christensen, and just listening to all of this, I hope they're with the mouths, reminded me of our last manager's meeting, and Monica, Emergency Services Coordinator Monica Ward, asked us all to be part of the ICS Incident Command System. And you heard at the start of this discussion that there was some confusion at the start of the Chaco Bar Fire, and I believe that, you know, all us managers should be, get all the training, so we can be part, we understand how the system works, and I think it's a real high priority that we do that. And, so just want to say kudos, Monica Ward, for making that effort, and also, too, is I was at the Chaco Bar Fire, and with that, and when I was working with the city, and was part of that Incident Command System, and saw how it worked, and it worked really well. But, what I would like to say, since there's so many fire chiefs here and everything, is that Curry County Road Department has several bridges that have weight restrictions, and it's really due to these special haul vehicles, and if you have, if you have special haul vehicles that are multi-axle, they may not be able to cross legal loads, legal loads across any of our bridges. And if at the end of this meeting, someone could give me a card, or something, that I could email all the list of these bridges with all the load restrictions, I would love to do that. So, that way, you know ahead of time on these bridges that we're pursuing grants for, and where they are in that pursuit, and that you know ahead of time, you might have to find a different route to safely get your special haul fire truck to the fire, out to the outside skirts of the county, or in the county, to our US forest lands, and our ONC lands. And so, but anyways, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Rich. Alrighty.
Anybody else comment, public comment? Court?
Sarah, you have something else? So, thank you, Mr. Chair, I coughed there just a minute ago, which I hardly ever do, and I think maybe I was getting choked up just a little bit, to see this many people in here that are dedicated and understand the risk. Mike Robson, you didn't overstate it. When you look at the kind of fuel that California has per acre, compared to what Oregon has per acre, it's astonishing how little in the damage that was done compared to what our fire fuels are here. I am also incredibly happy to see what's going on with the movement of the State Fire Marshal here, and that Senate Bill, and State Police arson investigation, just, we're growing, we're figuring it out, trying our best to prepare. And just to have this many people show up at a meeting is really good news. I'm predicting the worst this summer, and I would love to have someone say, "Boy, you overstated it." That wouldn't hurt my feelings for a second. And Mike, you, you know, you define the whole, you know, the snowpack, the lightning, I mean, you've been doing this for years. I want to read, just conclude with this, other than recruiting, and we've been talking about that a long time, and I think that we are looking at 150,000 of our American Rescue Plan funds to go into the local fire departments. I was just talking to the chief from Winchuk, and we just can't overlook this, there's some incredible opportunities there, and we can figure out how to responsibly and fairly distribute that, but it sends a message to the State Fire Marshal, the Forest Service, the, you know, the Oregon Department of Forestry, FPA's, all, you know, protective associations. I just want to read this real quick, but it's about firefighters, it was an article about Murr George, and they reference the IA aspect a lot, which of course is initial attack, and it talks about the old fire dogs, so it doesn't take too long, but I just want to cut right into a paragraph, I think that'll make sense. "Our crews are going around with smiles on their faces, we're having fun." This is after the, just to kind of give you a visual here, 31 lightning strikes and 17 man caused. This is in 2017, and they got a call from Dan Quinones, Forest Service, most of you know him, or some of you know him here, he was here every day of the Klondike Fire. "Our crews are going around with smiles on our faces, we're having fun. I smiled and thought, 'This is it. This is what most old-time fire dogs have been saying all along. If you encourage your crews to get out there and go after fires and put them out small, they will naturally become excited and connect with a passion of good firefighting. Such passion comes directly from successful initial attack. It comes from those times when a crew hits a fire, works it into the night, works until they feel tired and hungry and miserable, but they keep going, digging deep, and finding that better part of themselves, that part they instinctively hoped was there. Then, once they catch the fire, they walk off the mountain in the morning, they feel like kings, and nothing can ever take that feeling away. It's the tough times that build that kind of character, that make them great wildland firefighters." If I had any of my grandsons or granddaughters that are the right age, boy, I'd be reading them that, and say, "Here's something you can do that really can make a difference, really can, really can help save lives." And that's what we're talking about here, we're talking about saving lives, we know what hap... Mike, I'll never forget, on September 9th, we're in a board meeting here, and I warned the board that I was gonna get a call, and it probably wasn't gonna be very good news, and you asked me if I was sitting down, I walk out into the hallway, and you said, "Court, we just lost 2,000 homes in Phoenix and Talent." I mean, I mean, my heart absolutely stopped, and I said, "Okay, Mike, how many dead?" He said, "We don't know yet." So, we got the news the next day, and, I mean, I'll never forget that moment, and what it meant, and what it means. So, thank you all, I don't have anything else, much appreciated this afternoon.
You know what? I'm gonna stand up, and these other guys are gonna stand up with me, I'm gonna give you guys a round of applause, you deserve it. Our hats are off to you. You guys are awesome, we just appreciate you so much, thank you for coming, and you deserve a standing ovation, so with that, I will adjourn this meeting. So, feel free to talk all you want about whatever. Ten-minute break, and we'll be back here, Board.